Call the Lewiston City Council to order for its regular meeting on November 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Lewiston City Library. Our next order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge.
(inaudible). 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 Thank you, Council.
Our next order of business is citizen comments. And before we get to that, too, Council, I would like to recognize Brian Moore in the audience are soon to be a city councilor. That will be sworn in January. So, welcome, Brian. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on agenda items or other matters that they wish to bring to the council's attention, excluding those scheduled for public hearing. If there may not be another opportunity to comment once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Commentary is limited to three minutes. So, if we have any citizen comments tonight, I would invite you to the microphone in the middle of the floor. And we just need your name and your city of residence. We don't need your physical address, and you'll have approximately thirty comments. So, welcome, Robin.
Thank you. My name is Robin Weldy.
Have to get up on that microphone so we can hear you. There's folks listening at home that want to hear what you have to say, too.
My name is Robin Weldy. I live in the Lewiston Orchards, and my comment is about the fire hydrants. Lloyd dug up a leaking 24-inch irrigation pipe on August 28th at Cedar Avenue. Chris Dickamore marked where the needed fire hydrant would go since we didn't have a mid-block fire hydrant. On October 6th, the hole was swiftly filled with no fire hydrant. I called Chris, asking why the no-fire hydrant. I got a well-memorized list of excuses. Pipe not viable for hydrant. Future projects may allow for a hydrant installation. When a permit is pulled, the builder will pay for the hydrant installation. I quickly called Barney Metz at Lloyd. He's the Lloyd District Manager and Fire Marshal Julian Sorrell for help to rush the installation of the hydrant before they paved the road. Julian verified that the mid-block hydrant would save time, property, and lives during the fire. He had access to a hydrant that the city had already paid for. Barney Metz called days later with the memorized excuses. I called Mayor Johnson, who visited the site after speaking to Chris and Barney at Lloyd. He had no solutions for the problem for not taking opportunity to save money, lives, and property by installing hydrants while the main supply lines were exposed. It seems that the city and Lloyd want their cut of the money pie. When and if permits are pulled, our community needs affordable housing. Add $23,000 for the hydrant to each permit squelch's projects. Wouldn't it be better to take opportunity to install a hydrant rather than lose lives and property waiting for the money pie?
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate you being here tonight. Are there further citizen comments? I don't see any. Council, next, we'll move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council is so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the consent.
They're moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Cleaver to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Counselors, next up, we have Roman Number Five, active agenda. Item A, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. These are action items. Number one, Historic Preservation Commission, considering appointing Dennis Ortmann to a three-year term beginning November 28th, 2025. Counselors, I will tell you, like all appointments, I meet with the candidate first and ask them about their interest and why they want to serve in that commission committee, and then I also share with them some of our interests as a council in the work of that committee. And I can tell you that Dennis Ortmann, Dr. Ortmann, was not able to attend for other reasons, but I am pleased to motion to approve the appointment of Dennis Ortmann to a three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission beginning November 28th, 2025.
Second.
They're moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the appointment of Dennis Ortmann to a three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission beginning November 28th, 2025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council President Cleaver?
Just a comment. And the motion states November 28th, 2005.
Thank you. You've got a typo there on the agenda sheet, if you have them, folks.
There's, it's also for the Historic Preservation Commission. So, there's a couple, looks like a couple typos in there.
I can't hear you, Clerk Brockie.
So, Dennis Ortmann will be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Not the Disability Advisory?
Yeah, correct.
Well, then, we need to redo that. Whoa, look at that. I couldn't even pick up on that.
Oh, jeez.
So, we've got a couple of things going on here, folks. But, Counselors, we need to start over, and that prior motion, we're going to withdraw that. So, I'm going to ask the council to withdraw that with no objection.
No objection, Mayor Johnson.
Nope.
No objection. And let me move to approve the appointment of Dennis Ortmann to a three-year term beginning November 28th, 2025, on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
They're moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the appointment of Dennis Ortmann to a three-year term beginning November 28th, 2025, on the Historic Preservation Commission. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council President Cleaver and Clerk Brockie for that correction.
Mayor, comment?
Counselor Forsman?
Just a quick one. I'm currently on the Historic Preservation Commission, and Dennis and everyone on that committee is very dedicated and deserved to be on that, and I'm glad to see that citizens are willing to be on boards and being a part of that. And so, I commend him for doing it yet again and making that difference, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, next up, we have Item Two, Planning and Zoning Commission, considering reappointing Gabe I. Kaboni to a four-year term beginning December 2025, which is the end of the current term. I did meet with Gabe, and we had a great conversation, and he's excited to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He brings a lot of talent, a lot of knowledge with him. So, with that, I would move to approve the reappointment of Gabe I. Kaboni to a four-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning on December 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Council President Cleaver, to approve the reappointment of Gabe I. Kaboni to a four-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning on December 2025. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk Brockie, I have everything you need from us. Are we okay? We school come?
Yep, we're good.
We're school come? Okay. Under Roman Number Five, active agenda, B, Shooting Range Use Agreement with Clarkson, considering approving a shooting range use agreement between the city of Lewiston and the city of Clarkson, Washington, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Counsel, if you have questions tonight, our chief, Jason Cusick, here tonight. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve the Shooting Range Use Agreement between the city of Lewiston and the city of Clarkson, Washington, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
They're moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve the Shooting Range Use Agreement between the city of Lewiston and the city of Clarkson, Washington, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Clerk Brockie, and thank you, Chief Cusick, for your work on that. Item C, Resolution 2025-50, considering approving a TAP state local agreement between the Idaho Transportation Department and the city of Lewiston for Federal Highway Project Number A, 024, print 680, and print 8th Street, 5th Avenue to 11th Avenue, bike pedestrian, key number 24680, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director with us here tonight, Dustin Johnson. Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. These are pretty straightforward grants, but we're flying through the agenda, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to kind of give you a little behind baseball information on what we've got going on here. So, this is a great segue into next month's work session. This refers, coming to you, about kind of our CIP, Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, some of the projects that are in the queue, some of the projects we're trying to seek to, what projects do we want to construct? And so, construction, or transportation is one of those aspects of running a community that gets the most attention, mostly because everybody sees it every single day. In Public Works, you see less of the water and wastewater and stormwater if they're working right, whereas transportation, you see the good and the bad. So, unfortunately, it's also the most complicated because there is no dedicated enterprise fund, and you're constantly out there looking for grants. And so, what's been great over the last couple of years, or even the last couple of months, the city secured quite a bit of money with grants. And so, that's, tonight is kind of the fruits of the labor on that. Real quick, there's a lot of alphabet soup in here. So, we're talking about, this grant that you're seeing right now is a Transportation Alternative Program, which is TAP. So, TAP is more often than not dedicated to a specific non-vehicular. So, with some, you know, more, we typically apply for sidewalks. And so, we're focused on, obviously, what we've adopted in the past for capital improvement plans, but we're looking at commercial hubs. Obviously, schools are a high priority of areas that we can get connecting neighborhoods and commercial hubs to, say, schools, or maybe it's downtown, parks. You know, we're trying to connect pedestrians to facilities that they want to get access to. And this is a great grant, that is a TAP grant, that is 8th Street between 5th Avenue and 11th Avenue. So, as you crest up the hill, all the way down that corridor, and we had reference to the Disability Advisory Committee, there's some members that have been very active on that committee throughout the years, and this is one corridor. In fact, there's one specific block where you have utility poles and retaining walls and alleys and all kinds of different problems getting through there with even just any pedestrian without putting them out in the street. So, this grant is going in concert with another grant, that's a lighting grant, which is a different alphabet soup. That is the LCIP program, but that's not up for consideration tonight, but 8th Street will have some significant improvements. This is a, what is it, a two? It's just a 7.34% local match. So, city puts in 7.34%, and the rest of the balance is 92.66% is picked up by the grant. Within your packet, there is the matrix that kind of outlines what the grant awards. These are estimates, because we go out and we hire an engineer, design it, and they handle all the engineering inspection and operations for the instruction, and obviously, you've got to construct it. So, the numbers that were within your packet are estimates. If there's overages or underages, that's, it goes by the grant, which is 7.34% local match. So, with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors? Counselor Wright?
Yeah. There was a car that ran into a pedestrian pretty close to this area. I want to say maybe just a block off or right there between this, what would it be, the, like, 9th or 8th, right in there, 8th Avenue, 9th Avenue?
Yeah, that's very perceptive of you, that, so, this grant, TAP grant, is not based off of accident data, but the LCIP program that we got lighting for it was based off of that accident. So, that's actually a lot of what I'll talk about at the December work session, is the various types of grants, and the LCIP safety grant is, it's a double-edged sword in that the only way you're going to qualify for it is if you have a series of, you know, serious accidents or fatalities. So, we track the locations of the fatalities, and we know, because of the fatality, we'll qualify for that LCIP grant, and that was one that we go through there, you check a bunch of boxes, and that's what we qualified for that grant. But, and getting that grant made this one more attractive because it was only for lighting and some safety components within the traveled way, or the roadway, but not the sidewalk. So, that's where this one kind of fills that gap.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselors, further comments, questions? Counselor Schroder?
I have a motion to... Second.
They're moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve Resolution 2025-50. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counsel, next up, we have Item D, Resolution 2025-51, considering approving a state-local agreement between Idaho Transportation Department and the city of Lewiston for Federal Highway Project Number A, 025, print 054, and print Brighton Canyon Road Safety Improvements, key number 25054, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Again, our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So, Counselor Wright, this is that specific type of grant, different roadway, Brighton Canyon, for whatever reason, has had multiple fatalities over the last five years. And so, over the years, we've continued to apply for them. Unfortunately, there, you know, there's been, I can't remember the last fatality, but I know in my time living in the valley, I know at least three fatalities there. And so, it's a specific criteria that we're looking, and those accidents were leaving the roadway. And so, we're looking for a milliner overlay, which would make the surface more friction, so it would slide off and rumble strips, additional warning signs and delineators and those types of things. This is the big one. This is $2 million. And so, you don't typically see grants this large, but it's such a large corridor, unfortunately, it's such a large corridor, that $2 million only covers half of the project. And so, we built it, I think it is in the '27 budget for construction, because these grants, you receive them, you're working with LTAC back and forth through the design approval process. So, it usually takes a year, once the grant is secured, maybe two if it's a bigger project. But, the expectation is that this project would not be constructed until at least 2027, and we've already started programming. The intent is to use this grant for, it's specific to the lower half, but we would just do the whole section, all the way from the top to the bottom, to do a full milliner overlay for that Brighton Canyon. It is surprising for those of us who've been here long enough to see that road now need an overlay. So, it is, it is at least, oh, probably, I think it's almost 30 years old. So, it's time for a milliner overlay. If you're a pavement nerd like me, and you drive it every day, you start looking at the cracks, you look at the settling, you look at the rutting. And so, this project, it's unfortunate for the reason of the grant, but it's going to benefit the community with the $2 million influx into the transportation network. So, with that, all I have, I'll be here for questions.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Counselor Wright?
Yeah, so, at the top of Brighton Canyon, there's that kind of loop-dee bit of the road there, where, I think, settling from the old dump area. So, is that solvable with this as well, or no?
No. It was, I think it was Speckelmeier, it reached out to me a couple weeks or months ago now. And what's unfortunate, I mean, it is, in the engineering world, if it's lined, it's a landfill. If it's just a hole and you buried it, it's a dump. So, and that was a dump, and you can see the rough footprint of where it was and the recommendation. They did an analysis probably 20 years ago plus to evaluate, was it worth digging it up and, you know, pulling out all of that stuff that's out, that was in the hole, and then backfilling it, and the cost-benefit analysis that it would probably slow down and stop by, it was actually like 20, 30. And you can see, over the years, they do it less. And so, the one good thing about, I've worked in landfills, it's the organics that are decomposing, and eventually, they stop decomposing because all, everything, it's just, it's played itself out, and it'll stop sinking. And so, we've put, who knows how many layers of asphalt on that patch, but the expectation is that it will stop settling, and it'll be fine. But, no, this won't, it'll cover the transition into it, but it won't, you know, dig that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Further counsel comments? Counselor Schroder?
Resolution 2025-51.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Cleaver, to approve Resolution 2025-51. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Clerk Brockie, Director Johnson. And Director Johnson, I want to say, thank you to your staff, too, because I know they work very, very hard on these projects and securing those grants, and they do a wonderful job for us, so thank you. Counsel, next, we move to Roman Number Seven, unfinished and new business. Item B, City Counselor Comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently for the city council, an item that may come for the city council in the foreseeable future. They shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors?
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I just wanted to extend my thoughts and prayers. There's someone on the Historic Preservation Committee, I don't want to name names, because I don't know if they want me to say their name or not, but I will say that someone on the Historic Preservation Committee lost a loved one. So, if you can put them in your thoughts and prayers in this time of difficulty, that would be most appreciated, ever easy losing someone you love. So, I just wanted to send my prayers and thoughts there.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, further comments? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody who participated in the election that we just had. Congratulate the victors and to those who didn't win, did a great job, and wish you luck in the future. I, the one thing I'd bring up, and I don't know how many people will hear it, but we had a pretty low participation, and maybe that's the norm, but doesn't have to be. I mean, we live in a country where we have the right to vote, make decisions in our government. Take advantage of it. Vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Further counselor comments? Item B, City Boards and Commissions, laser on it. Well, Counsel President Cleaver?
I've got two meetings this week. The LCV MPO, meeting on Thursday afternoon, 4 o'clock, and we've moved the URA meeting from tomorrow at noon to Thursday at noon due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Counsel President Cleaver?
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I'm sorry, my brain totally threw a, through a, through a loop. Can I say one more comment?
Please.
I forgot to thank our veterans. Oh, my goodness. My husband would be ashamed. Hopefully, he's not listening. Thank you to all the veterans, if you are listening, for doing and serving our country and giving the ultimate sacrifice for time from your family, or if you paid the ultimate sacrifice, I thank you for serving, and hopefully, tomorrow, you get free coffees or foods or whatever you do, and go out there and enjoy the day that is dedicated to you, because you deserve it. And I just wanted to make sure, I thank to all those that have served.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we'll move to Mayor Comments. Although, I'll make a comment on the boards and stuff, serving on Cedar. Last Friday, we worked at the food bank, and that was a rewarding experience, packaging food that's going to be distributed out in the community. So, that was kind of a neat experience, and just some of the community service that our different boards and commissions do. So, very appreciative for that. Mayor Comments? I'd like to give a shout-out to LC Smiles. They're located on 5th and Brighton, and annually, they provide dental care for veterans. And so, I did make a point of stopping in there and thanking Dr. Barki and his crew for what they're doing in our community, and it's those kind of examples, I think, that really say a lot about our community and how we care for our veterans, you know. So, so, thank you to LC Smiles, their generosity on that. Counselors, we're next, we move to Roman Number Seven, D, Agenda Topics.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
A while back, we had, a while, a while back, we had talked about possibly an agreement with having, like, electric scooters and bikes, and then we just haven't really brought that up again, and where that could be, or if we ever could get to that point. I don't remember the people that presented to us, but if we could maybe visit that as a objective, maybe a future objective down the road, that would be great. I don't care what time it is on, any action pact or work session, if that works better.
I can certainly add it to our list of future agenda items, and at some point, get to it, and then, if you want to get to it sooner, then you could make a motion to pull it off there, or you could do that tonight, your choice.
I'm not in a hurry to get it on.
Okay. I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Topic? Topics? Counsel, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
They're moved by Council President Cleaver, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.